I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Gearbaugh, Cybo Kane, Aig, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From the city staff, we have city manager Campell, clerk Royal, technology support coordinator Schonk, I think he's supposed to be here if he's not.
He's back there.
Oh, I'm sorry. City engineer superintendent Ruble, Sergeant Bassow, and I believe our DPW director, Mr. Fordice, is also here. For the rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you please sign in in the back, we would appreciate it. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. Just want to make note, we don't need to add it as a discussion item, but under the, under reports and other announcements, I'm going to be giving an update on work meetings and hopefully coming to consensus on scheduling perhaps one, maybe two special work meetings, either later this month or next. But again, we don't, it doesn't require an amendment to the agenda, I'll bring that up under reports and other announcements.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council member Gearbaugh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We have no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. We have two presentations this evening. The first is a 2014 annual report from the Planning Commission. I guess I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Ruble. And you have PowerPoint, is that correct?
Every year at this time, we put together a brief presentation of the major activities of the Celine Planning Commission, and a little different color combination every year. The Planning Commission members for 2014 are shown here. We have two members of city council on the Planning Commission, that's Mayor Morrow and Mr. Dean Gearbaugh. And then the other appointments are one staff representative and then four, I mean, excuse me, five citizen appointments, Scott Lem, Cheryl Heff, Scott Fosdick, Walt Byers, and Bill Beardsley, who acts as the vice chairman under Chairman Jack Seo. Both of those are appointees also. One of the larger items we handled this year happened near the end of the year, in fact, the last meeting, December 10th, and Mr. Shipman is here tonight representing the special land use portion of the project. That hearing was well attended, we had good participation from especially the citizens in Phase 1, and this, I took the opportunity here to get a picture with the audience, with our consultant planner, Doug Lewan, who performed the composite review for the city for the Huntington Woods Phase 2, as well as the CUP and the special land use review. And then the other photograph is of our city attorney, Scott Smith, who was also attending the meeting. So we had both, both of our consultants were there to explain some interest in the plan review and in some, and address some issues that were voiced by the residents in Phase 1 of Huntington Woods. So that, then the special land use portion or action is later on this agenda tonight. This shows the FY '15 budget, the current budget, and the proposed FY '16 budget, which already has been reviewed and acknowledged by the Planning Commission to send to staff for the work budget. About midway through the year, we approved the preliminary and final site plan for 117 South Ann Arbor, that's the proposed Salt Springs Brewery and Beer Garden, located at the former Methodist Church property in downtown Celine. And they obtained a building permit actually about a month ago and are actively performing some indoor work. The action taken on Huntington Woods is shown here on this slide, was action to approve the preliminary site plan and the preliminary portion of the CUP and the special land use review, and the special land use is on your agenda tonight. The proposed Phase 2 addition would have 42 house lots, it would have public streets, public utilities to be dedicated to city once they're completed. We had a parking lot site plan approved for 101 South Harris, that's Snook's Barber Shop, actually is the owner of it, and he reconstructed the house, former Scruggs House at 101 South Harris into a two-unit structure, benefited from the D1 zone ordinance. And so here we have a photograph prior to construction, it was basically a lawn area and a driveway, and here it is, the picture on the right shows a lot after construction. McDonald's site plan amendment was approved with conditions to be fulfilled, and McDonald's subsequently has put the project on hold to deal with, I think, some budgeting issues on their part, but also some land transfer issues with Pittsfield Township, because a very small portion of the lot, just their detention pond, actually is a township island in oversight as far as the annexation is concerned.
Mr. Ruble, why don't you hold tight for just one second, see if we can, I'm sorry.
The, we had a site plan amendment for 1715 Woodland Drive, installation of two more silos. The picture on the right shows two existing silos, and they had proposed installation of two additional silos, but I don't think they actually have been installed at this Other site plan amendments were Dan's Downtown Tavern, an awning structure over his alleyway that's used for outdoor dining, and also for a new entrance sign, a business center sign for the Oaks Shopping Plaza. There were concept site plan presentations both here and at the Planning Commission, and then back at the city council again recently, by Peter's Building Company and High Meadows Incorporated for a proposed development, property sale of 207 Monroe Street. That hearing, or that presentation at the Planning Commission was part of that first slide, that also added to the participation of the audience that night on the Huntington Woods review and hearing. Special land use approvals were authorized for martial arts school at 1295 Industrial Drive, subsequently chose another site, but we also had two other special land uses authorized, reviewed by city council and authorized by the council here in recent months. Both of these were for Mr. Helmer, Jerry Helmer. One was the rehabilitation of 250 East Michigan Avenue, and a veterinary use was one of the two uses, and same thing at Bennett Street, one of the two uses proposed there required a special land use, it was for the barber slash hair salon. And he spent considerable time and money rehabbing both of these properties. The one at 250 East Michigan didn't quite make the weather, you know, the bad weather dates, so he let it finish up in the spring. A zoning code amendment was approved, both at Planning Commission and city council, for rezoning 555 Mills from R18 to R1C for the proposed development of what is called Cypress Woods, or Cypress Ridge, excuse me. And the site plan actually will be presented to the Planning Commission, the preliminary site plan, that is, will be presented to Planning Commission on February 25th, and so we expect to get some good feedback there from all participants, including those in the neighborhood. What is proposed now is a 31-lot residential area. And other, other zoning amendments include the development of home business tier one, separate from, excuse me, home business tier two, separate from home business tier one, which had to be amended somewhat. And the major impetus for that was due to the medical marijuana act, and the fact that we had to form a zoning regulation appropriate for that purpose, and so that medical marijuana is regulated such that it can only operate as a home, or as a legitimate home business. We did extend the site plan for 1200 Woodland Drive, it's back on the agenda later this month, also on February 25th. The request this time is to extend it because they have a prospective buyer for the property. Other site plan amendments were of various kinds and nature. One was administrative review and approval, that's staff administrative review and approval because of a, one section of the planning code allows for administrative approval versus Planning Commission approvals. So staff reviewed and approved these three, one being the philosophy shed at the railroad depot by, constructed by Max Kelly and his group. One was a tree relocation because it blocked the new old national sign where there was a UBT sign. And then on Industrial Park, at 250 South Industrial, at Condat, Rand designed a small addition, a lunchroom addition for the office area, which I, I don't think has actually been built yet. We performed administrative review for new lighting at the Celine Plaza, which is just behind CVS, and the owner, even though he lost quite a few tenants, including ACO, installed a new LED parking lot lighting system, which works quite nice. And then the Methodist Church obtained administrative approval to install a 128 urn columbaria, which is outside columbaria for cremane niches. There were other administrative reviews for changing the way that refuse containers and roll-off containers are housed at, at Norgren, at 1325 Woodland Drive, and also for installation of a sanitary sewer monitoring pit outside 1474 Woodland Drive East for American Side and ordinance exceptions were granted in two locations, one being the Celtic Festival Sign, the annual location of two signs along US 12, and then the recent approval by, an exception allowed by the Planning Commission for the 150th anniversary sign for Trinity Lutheran Church. Sorry, that's okay. There were a couple maintenance projects that merited recognition, just to show Planning Commission, city council also, that projects are maintained without having to sometimes tell owners. At Sheffield 2, we paved the parking lot, which is farther back, but they also paved part of their entrance next to Harris Street, Jack Potts, really paved everything that they own, South Industrial Drive, both front and back, and the city installed this. It doesn't turn off, by the way. It's along the south boundary of the old section of the cemetery, and then we also repaired a section that was hit a few times by cars entering the drive that goes to the mausoleum. Other site plan maintenance projects were paving of a deteriorated area of Harry's Auto at 220 East Michigan Avenue, and at 365 to 797 West Michigan, which is, Celine Service Center is their official name, but they were awning installed and the buildings were sort of fixed up, and they look much better. To date, our 2015 goals and objectives for the Planning Commission are shown here, our implement, further implementation of the downtown farm base code, as more and more activities occur downtown, especially in expansions or development of open areas, to promote green aspects for new developments, and we look at the way storm waters handled and treated, especially on-site and landscaping. Planning considerations for healthy living, that is sidewalks, pathways, and bikeways. And since we have the opportunity this year, we get to work on our master plan update, that happens every five years, we will probably look at these goals and objectives as we think about amendments that are being proposed to the master plan. And then involvement with regional planning, or development planning is an ongoing effort also, as we become aware of what's going on around our community in at least four townships. I believe that is the end of this presentation, so if you had questions or anything particularly you'd like to know.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble, that was very thorough. Are there any questions for city engineer superintendent? Mr. Gearbaugh, do you plan to, or care to comment at all as a member of the Planning Commission?
No, I think this year, we've had a few more projects that have been coming through, so we're seeing finally some redevelopment and stuff happening, so hopefully that'll help assist with our tax base as we get some more projects coming forward, and especially some new residential developments.
I would echo that. I think I was appointed to Planning Commission in late 2011 by my predecessor Gretchen Driscoll, and I would say this is the most active year on planning since my tenure began four years ago. So it's all very exciting, and Mr. Ruble, we appreciate the time and effort you put into summarizing the activities of the Commission during 2014. Thank you, sir. Mr. Schonk, I think you're up next with mobile app for the city website, which is very exciting, and I guess I just want to comment, I'm hopeful that staff can work between now and in our next meeting, the first Monday in March, to rectify some of these technical issues that we're experiencing, because if my memory serves me correctly, we also experienced them some last week as well. So those can be dealt with, that would be greatly appreciated, but I think the members of council and the general public as well. But Mr. Schonk, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
All right.
Thank you.
It's not, not winning tonight. Second, I apologize, I'm trying to get over right now.
I'd rather mirrors my experience with computers. When they work, it's great, and when they don't, you just want to hit them with a...
Yeah, still want to work tonight.
So Chris, is it more of a problem with the technology that we have in here, or is it just a hit and miss?
Uh, this one's a little, it's fixable, we can track it down here. Yeah, for some reason, it doesn't want to work to the projector. Um, let's, okay, yeah, he's going to reboot the system real quick. Okay, yeah, yeah, I apologize for the delay, I'm not sure. Do you want to, you want to?
Why don't you reboot it and lower the screen? If you can't get it to work, we'll bring you back at our first meeting in March.
Okay.
Which should be on the second.
What's that? Okay. Yeah, yeah, I can talk about the website, but it just doesn't do it justice.
You might talk about what you fancy.
I could do that. So we came, I think it was beginning of December, we came and I spoke about the new updates and kind of pushing for a mobile site. We've done that now, we've got it just about wrapped up, just going to show kind of some of the new features. We hit on most of the kind of critiques, the website, we optimize search now, so we've really kind of increased that. The results before were not good, to say the least, so we beefed them up, and I'm pretty happy with the end results. The other thing we did, we streamlined the calendar now, and that's still a work in progress, but it's a lot better than it was. We have multiple views now, before it was a grid view, now there's also a list view, so you can see things chronologically, which also helps on the mobile side of things, so a big grid's hard to see on a small phone, so now you can shrink it down and make it a little bit easier. Some of the other things, the new site up front is kind of gone into an illustration style of website, where we are mixing the news. So before, we had just kind of random images around the city, now they're useful, they're updated constantly for new events. It's a really good marketing tool right up front as well. So hopefully, we'll be in business here. So, yep, I think we did go, yeah, okay, let me fire this up. Promise not to death by PowerPoint tonight, I'll just, I've got a couple quick little slides here, kind of reiterate what I talked about earlier. So here's our current website, you know, we built it in 2009, at the time, state-of-the-art, a lot of new modern features, but since then, the web's really changed. You know, it's gone from the desktop to everything, I mean, we've got the internet on our watches now, so the website now reflects, reflects that. So here's the new design. What we've really done is optimized for touch, that's really what we're building for now. In 2009, we built the original site in its current state, it was built for a mouse, but that's not really the trend anymore, mobile is just exploding as it looks like it will continue. So some of the new navigation is optimized also for trends in the web. So before, if you look at the top, you know, the Celine logo, I think most people are familiar now with, you know, if there's a logo on the top left of the site, you click it, always takes you home. So just a small change that we didn't have currently, that always, you know, goes there. The other thing too, just the telephone number at the top, we didn't have that before, you know, simple change, but a big one. So also the small buttons up there for the social media, before, you know, 2009 again, that was, you know, wow, social media, that's brand new, so we had to explain it a little more. Now people know, the, you know, the blue F is Facebook, the, you know, lighter teal T is Twitter, so kind of subtle changes. The big thing though, so this is our current site on a mobile platform, there's no scaling, it just doesn't know what the device is, it's not aware of what you're coming on, so it just shows it like if you're on a desktop. Whereas now, it's optimized for mobile. So it, the, the site will scale dynamically, depending on what device you have. So if you have a tablet, it'll look different than if you have a phone, but it'll all be the same content, just displayed differently and streamlined for whatever experience your device can handle. I talked about the calendar grid, this is our current calendar, which is a good calendar, but it doesn't scale very well, it doesn't look very good on a mobile phone, it's hard to break down, so to alleviate that, we've gone to the list view by default. So that could scale, we can make it big, we can make it small, everybody can get to it easily. Another one of the critiques of the site was that we don't have agendas on there, we don't have links to it. That, we're working on the streamlining the process now, but going forward, all meetings will have agendas on there as they become available. Now, it depends, you know, council, you know, agendas can be Thursday, Fridays, those, you know, as soon as we have them, they'll be up there, so going forward. And the other thing, the search, so I searched here for building permit, which is not very useful, we got five results, and you know, there's a couple of building permits now. When you search for building permit, you can see the content before you click it, you get a nice little kind of breakdown. Also, there's 72 results instead of five, so it's going to pull from a lot more to get, to get to where you're going. So the other nice thing we've included now is a file download section, that's just the download section. So previously, if you wanted to download a building permit, you had to go to the building permit page, click whatever, now we can link directly to it. So if you just want to download the applications, we have them all in one spot, you don't have to mess with the site per se. So just another kind of optimization for what you're doing. So now, let's go look at it in real time here. So this is the new site. We changed the sections too, so right now, we have a parking update in the top right, we can change that anytime to whatever the newer information is out there. The new section here is the news, as well as promotional tool, so it rotates automatically depending on what, what we want to put in there. Right now, it's snow removal, trash plate, auto changes, we can update that constantly to whatever, whatever needs to be done. Also, scroll down here, we've kind of, there's also a dedicated section for the rec center now, before, they had links to it, but now, a car will have the ability, whatever's big with the rec, they can update constantly, it's right there on the left, it'll always be there, people can find it pretty easy. Also, the new section for the Michigan Ave Rehab, we've kind of unofficially dedicated this area for that project. I know this information's out of date, and it'll be updated before we kick the site live, but just to kind of show what it'll be for going forward, any big updates with that, because it's such a massive project affecting the community, we thought it was kind of important to have that right up front, so whenever you want the latest information, people will know where to find it. So, there. And then the fun stuff, the site will automatically scale from the smallest phone out, automatically, however big your screen is, it automatically fits. So even from the teeny, tiny little phone, this is all optimized for touch, so there're big buttons, easy to find, scroll down, so, search, big buttons. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Let me make a quick comment, Chris. I think that this is excellent work, it's a substantial improvement from where we were. I hope that your efforts will continue to put all sorts of pertinent, useful information on the web, without making it look, without making it look too cluttered or overwhelming. I guess, two comments that I have, and I think I mentioned this when you made your initial presentation, I hope that my colleagues on council will work with the various board and commission members and their staff liaisons to make sure that the information on the Planning Commission's page, or the Parks Commission page, is timely and updated. And then the other thing that I'd like to suggest, Chris, but it's, it's really key and fundamental that all my council colleagues participate in this, before, when you went to the government page and you clicked on city council, there was a picture of each council member, and then their contact information, usually a cellphone and then email. I would like to expand that and have council members, if they're interested, able to submit a bio that could also go on there. And then we used to also link to the most recent interview that council members had done with Chase or another individual from SETN, which I think is a very useful, excuse me, useful video that I think our citizens will benefit from if they want to learn more and know who their council members are. So that, those would be my recommendations.
Yeah, absolutely, that's a great point. It's definitely a team effort, you keep all the information up to date, so yeah, if everybody has time to review that and make sure it's up to date, that'd be super helpful.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Roth?
I think it's excellent changes. You have, it's listed down here as mobile app.
Yeah.
Is it really going to be a mobile app that you download for such?
No, yeah, that's kind of a, it's mobile, in a sense, the website is mobile, there's no app to download per se. Any, any device, the user isn't going to know the difference. If they punch in cityoceline.org, they're going to go to the mobile site without knowing any difference. It's just automatically going to scale down to their device.
Just as, as it was listed on here, I thought maybe we had a separate app.
Oh, okay, no, I apologize, no, there's no, no... Oh, okay, no, I apologize, no, there's no, no separate app.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Um, do you know, anticipate a date when this will go live?
Uh, we could potentially launch this week with, with the go ahead, so, yeah.
And then just one very minor suggestion, you had Michigan Ave Rehab, and the term that we've been using is Michigan Ave Makeover?
Okay.
So the, the title should match across the board?
Sure, yeah, like I said, that was kind of a place fillers to show, so yeah, I'll update all that before we kick.
Looks good, thank you.
Chris, are you planning to do a blast on Twitter, Facebook, and the Celine scene when we do launch the new website?
Yes, yeah, I'll coordinate all that, so, we'll have it out, make sure the bugs are worked out with the launch, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll kick it out by the next day, so...
Any other comments or questions? No, thanks for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for your patience.
Actually, before we get to citizen comments, I was, uh, I neglected to mention a couple things at the beginning of the meeting this evening. You have four supplementals in front of you. Um, one are use rates relating to our parking lots downtown, one is an email that I believe Mr. Fordice will be speaking to regarding the LED rate change. Um, the third are Celine Main Street property values, uh, this relates to a request that I think Mr. Gearball put in writing sometime either late last week or, or this weekend. Um, and then the final is some proposals for signage, um, relating to the non-commercial loading and unloading zone on South Ann Arbor. And of course, those will be discussed, um, at, at various points, uh, throughout the meeting this evening. Does everyone have those four documents, by the way? I'll take that as a yes, very good. Um, we move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me, seconded by Councilmember Roth. There are no discussions. And all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing, this is agenda item 15-27, this is special land use request for Huntington Woods. This is a series of four motions. The first motion will be to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Assistant Clerk Connie Dehan.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dehars, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Gearball. Uh, any questions regarding the memo from Assistant Clerk Dehan? No, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to open the public hearing at 8:03 PM. So moved? Moved by Councilmember Gearball, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of opening the public hearing at 8:03 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is now opened. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing then at 8:04. Moved by Councilmember Gearball to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sibok Koenig. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, public hearing is now closed. The final motion will be a motion to approve or not to approve the special land use to allow up to 42-unit community unit plan, site condominium with the following conditions. One, all of the conditions that are attached to the approval of the CUP. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. I assume no one from staff wants to comment on this, Mr. Rubel? Do you want to comment at all, or no, sir? You don't have to. It's your call. Mr. Shipman, we appreciate you being here this evening, and your continued interest and investment in Celine is appreciated. We look forward to working with you and the other neighbors on this project in the future. Uh, is there any discussion regarding this motion? Mr. Rhodes?
Um, I had one question, which Mr. Rubel actually answered during his planning commission review, and that was whether or not those streets were going to be private or become city streets, and he said they're going to become city streets, and, and up to our standards, I'm assuming, after the end of construction.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Then it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes and seconded by Councilmember Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. We move on to new business, this is item 15-28, this is Plant Moran Professional Service Contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 28th, 2015 memo from City Treasurer Mickey Joe Bennett, and to authorize or not authorize the city manager to execute a five-year professional service contract with Plant Moran to provide auditing services, services, excuse me, subject to review and approval by the city attorney. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge and authorize.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sibok Koenig, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dehan. I know we have Martin from Plant Moran here, Martin, we appreciate you being here this evening, my friend, and we appreciate all the work you've done for the city, um, for many years, how many has it been?
Just a couple.
Just a couple? God bless you. Um, Mr. Campbell, do you want to maybe comment on this, and then, um, we'll, we'll entertain any thoughts from, from Martin as well?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, just as you alluded, uh, the city has partnered with Plant Moran for several years to do our annual audit, and in addition to that annual audit, they're also some of our, um, consultants, if you will, for various things throughout any given year, um, that they, um, that we can pick up the phone and call them, and, um, it's just part of the service, uh, that they, that they provide, the high-quality service, excuse me, that they provide to us. Um, so, uh, as opposed to calling and that we're on the clock, and then we get a bill, and so that, that's been very, very positive, that we, that we don't have to worry about that. Um, now, there are some other larger projects, for instance, that, that we did employ them and, and was at, at a little additional cost. You may recall, when, when we, um, did our reorganization with the financing and, and treasurer's office, they helped us do an evaluation of that. But, uh, but that was fair, that was fairly significant review versus, um, the phone call, and sometimes, depending on what it may be, they may get, we may call them several times on an issue, but they're always there and, and willing to give us, uh, high-quality, um, uh, advice and, and direction, so. Um, and again, it's also, um, based on, uh, back in, it was 2005, I believe, when the city was tightening its belt, uh, they gave a 20% reduction, and this last five-year, they just, this was this last year, 2014, that they finished up our audit, so that was a five-year, um, uh, agreement, and then this one is so, is, is well, and it still reflects that 20% overall reduction from 2005, with a not to exceed 3% annual increase, uh, I believe that's correct, right?
That's correct.
Uh, for the, for the five, uh, concurrent years. So, is, you can hear, um, you can read in, in, uh, Ms. Bennett's memo, as well as from what I'm saying, where certainly staff highly recommends that, uh, council would, um, approve this agreement and go forward.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell? No? Oh, Mr. Gearball, I'm sorry.
And maybe for both of you. Knowing that you've been our auditor for almost 25 years or more, because I know you were here before I even started on council, um, there's always been this concern, we're staying with the same firm, and there used to be the idea that you would rotate firms after some period of time. Of course, now, there's not that many firms out there, or whatever, that specialize in this kind of local government and aspects. Um, what precautions do you take in terms of, I know you rotate individuals that are assigned and so forth, but how do you reassure us that we don't end up like a Dixon, um, the city that had the problem where they had like that? And I think that's one of the things that I always like to be reassured, that we're doing the type of checks and balances that need to be in place.
Absolutely, so, uh, and first of all, thank you for having me here tonight, and we do value the relationship that we have with the city, and, uh, we thank you again for, uh, looking at the proposal. Uh, the way we look at the, make sure that there's no issues, uh, one is that we have a very large governmental practice, uh, actually the largest in the state, and, um, if, if you look at the partner group itself, uh, we have the most partners that are very knowledgeable, and, uh, we attend a lot of trainings, and we have to perform a lot of trainings. Uh, if you look at the staff that are assigned to City of Celine, uh, you have, so, I've been the partner on, uh, the city for about five years now, uh, before that, I was a manager, um, Les Pulver, uh, was the partner before that, and there's essentially a natural rotation of partners from that perspective. So you'll always get that fresh approach, fresh look, and you still have the expertise because of the firm and just the overall knowledge that we have at Plant Moran. Uh, if you look at the staffing itself, uh, we do have rotation as well, uh, some of it's unfortunately natural, just because some people do leave, uh, sometimes with promotions, et cetera, you can't have two or three managers on the audit, so we make sure that we have a fresh set of eyes looking at it versus having the same people looking at everything. Uh, if you look at, I, I don't want to put less value on my review, uh, however, if you look at the people that are in the trenches, and looking at the work papers, and looking at controls, and, uh, working with the staff, um, those are the people that are staff, in-charges, and managers on the audit, and those individuals will have more of a rotation to make sure that the fresh set of, uh, eyes look at all the items, in order to make sure that nothing significant happens. So there's a natural rotation, and we make sure that, uh, you have a fresh set of, uh, eyes looking at everything. And on top of that, we also have professional standards group that looks at the audit after every audit's done, uh, right before the final printed copies are issued, the financial statements, and they have a fresh set of eyes as well, and we have a whole group that reviews that, so it's not the same person looking at it every single year. So again, you have a numerous amount of people that look at, uh, the controls that are in place, and then also, you have the continuity of the firm, so that we don't have to retrain the people, we make sure that everything's done, uh, the most efficient way possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gearball, good question. Um, any other questions for Mr. Campbell? Martin, do you care to share anything else?
I just, like I said, I, we value the relationship, we appreciate you taking a look at this contract, uh, and, uh, again, as, uh, the city manager mentioned, we do have, we offer the 20% discount, we understand that, uh, I know that every municipality went through a difficult time the last few years, and even though things are rebounding, and I, I saw a lot of the growth, uh, from the presentation earlier, which is great to see, however, we're still not out of the woods yet, and we want to make sure that we offer that discount to the city, we value the relationship, we hope that we continue that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything, uh, additional for, uh, Mr. Campbell or Martin? No? Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here tonight. Again, we appreciate your work and your team's work on behalf of the city. Uh, is there any subsequent discussion on this motion? No? Then it's been properly moved by Councilwoman Sibok Koenig, seconded by Dehan, to acknowledge receipt and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. We move on to new business item 15-29, this is fee book update, this will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 3rd, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel regarding fee book revisions, excuse me, and to approve or not to approve the revisions to the city's 2015 fee book as recommended. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Ms. Dillon? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Rubel, do you care to comment at all? Then we'll open it up for questions.
Right, uh, just briefly, um, as you can see on the cash chart, we, we don't have a lot of fees to update at this point in time. We did quite a few adjustments last year, as you recall, we had a couple pages of it, in fact, that spread across, uh, most all departments, and apparently, that was thorough enough last year, and we brought enough fees up to date that there weren't that many to look at this year. However, some departments expressed interest in bringing something back in April. So, uh, I wanted to get these fees in place in time for, uh, use for any upcoming, uh, projects, especially those affected by any building permit projects or, and engineering review projects. Um, so basically, as, as in other years, we, we try to update fees that are going out of date, things five or more years old, and try to make, try to keep up the, the trend, and make sure that, uh, our revenues, uh, offset our, our, our expenses. So I do expect to be back in April probably with some other departmental fees.
Any questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Gearball?
I'm just kind of concerned that we hadn't reviewed some of these fees for 12 and 13 years, considering inflation and everything that happened, why would that have been why we would not have adjusted these fees?
Well, if you're looking at the 2002 fees, uh, basically because a lot of them weren't used in the last 10 years, so...
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
You know, and, uh, so, we revisited them with, with a specific purpose that we are probably now going to implement them more.
So we haven't been implementing them, but we, or we just have any projects?
Well, we haven't had, uh, a lot of large development projects that they would apply to.
Anything further, Mr. Gearball? Nope? Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Um, I noticed that the, uh, base building permit fee is increased by, by $10, just wondering if there's any change in the, um, charge based on the value of the project, the dollars per thousand?
Um, well, those don't, those are, tho, those are based on value of the project, so it automatically goes up. As the value of the work increases, the value of the permit increases, because there's a formula for that. So that's on, basically automatic.
So is that current amount that you're showing, is that $15 per thousand? $15 per hundred, that's the base fee?
No, that's just, uh, that, that is just the application fee, I forgot to mention that. Um, that's just the base application fee. Last year, we, we increased the application fees for all the mechanicals, and, uh, this year, we're catching up on the building permit, and that, that's just to do the form, to get it into the computer and to review the form.
Right. Okay.
Anything further, Mr. Rhodes?
No, that's fine.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Rubel, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the lax, last action item of the evening, which is new business item 15-30, this is creating a non-commercial loading/unloading, uh, parking space. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 5th, 2015 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the non-commercial loading and unloading parking space to be located south of the transition area at 101 South Ann Arbor Street.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth, so it's been moved to approve by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilmember Roth. Mr. Campbell, do you want to go over your, the three, um, I believe, three documents that were provided in the packet, as well as the supplemental that was placed at everyone's seat this evening?
Sure.
The floor is yours, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you may recall from last week's discussion, uh, that, uh, trying to, well, based on, on Marines Designs' request, and of course, Mr. and Mrs. Goleman are here, um, if, um, if you have any questions of them, but trying to, to assist in, um, creating a space where they can, uh, load their flowers, and their, um, their different, um, materials and equipment for, for events and such, um, because really, there's not, there, there's not, uh, a legal space to, to do that. Um, well, I mean, they concern like parking, the parking spaces, but if those are taken up, um, so, as you can see on the, um, on the attachment that has, um, so scenario A and scenario B, and it shows, um, scenario A is, uh, moving this, what we call this transition lane or transition area, and that, as you may recall from last week as well, that transition area is just at a transition from the parking into the travel lane, um, going north, uh, on, on South Ann Arbor. at a transition from the parking into the travel lane going north on South Ann Arbor. And so, that transition lane is not for parking, but that's what, it's been used for kind of a unofficial loading zone, but we need to figure something else out because that's not allowed. So, as you can see, if we move, if we move the transition area to the north and create, and use the existing transition area for parking, our concern, staff's concern, is that you're going to create a quicker bottleneck and have less cars, be able to get in the stacking lanes for the straight, the straight through and the right, and also his right turns onto Michigan Avenue. So, we would propose that we create a, again, this is a public space, not a dedicated space, but a public space in the current legal parking space, which is immediately adjacent to the south end of the, of the transition area, which would be scenario B, that we would create that as a, what I've been terming a non-commercial loading and unloading zone. And as I talked with their neighbors between Marines and Cobblestone Rose, so, which also include Cobblestone Rose, Excalibur Barber Shop, and Kerrigan's Cafe, and they were, they were supportive of doing this. So, but again, it would be a, we would propose a time limit of 20 minutes. I talked with, with the Gomans about time, and they said most any given day when they're u, when they're loading in and out, 15 minutes is fine, but there are occasions that they have big events that take longer to pack up their vehicle, and so, somewhere between 25 minutes to a half hour. So, I kind of split, if you will, because I'm trying, I think we wanted this, this spot to turn over quickly and big reasons, so they can, they can utilize it more. And the other thing, when I talked with Karen at Kerrigan's, is that she likes it, that maybe one of, you know, her customers that are trying to get in and out quickly for a cup of coffee could certainly get in, get out, even for instance, folks across the street at Benito's, trying to pick up a pizza, could do the same. So, and then also, that I handed out to DAS this evening, Jeff Fordyce, DPW Director, Fordyce helped, and these are some proposed wording for signs that we would, so we have just a 20-minute parking, and this is under, this is similar to what is in what I would call the Bush's Shopping Center there by UPS and Joyful House, where it just says, you know, 10-minute parking or whatever, where so people can get in and get out, and so this is along those lines. Then, of course, loading zone, you know, no parking loading zone, non-commercial loading zone, all with a 20, you know, letting them know it's 20 minutes. I know Jeff did a little bit of an official study. He asked one person, but, but the question that came up, you know, if you saw, you know, something about a loading zone, whether it says non-commercial or not, do you, would you as a, as an individual think that it's okay to park there? And that's exactly, as Ms. Seibel Koenig, that was the response was, yeah, no, I would think it was, it was a loading zone, and I couldn't park there as a, as a vehicle, a passenger vehicle. So, so that's kind of, that's where we're at, so we think we should, we should be able to do something to help resolve this challenge, this conundrum that Marines Designs has, and, but again, so that's kind of where we're at, the 20-minute parking, but, but at the same time, you know, loading zone, non-commercial loading zone, you know, that could help in freeing it up more often, too. So, that's where we're at.
Let's, I want to stick to the motion that's before us, and then if there's consensus and the motion passes, then we can have some discussion as to which of the four sign renderings the council prefers. But at this time, I guess before I open it up to questions, Mr. Fordyce, since you also worked on this issue, do you care to comment at all?
I, I don't really have anything to add.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Campbell regarding his report or his memorandum? Mayor Protem Rhodes, and then Ms. Seibel Koenig?
First question is, I don't see anything about the hours of enforcement, and, you know, given the pressure on our downtown parking, and I'm not certain what the hours are of the requestor's business, but it seems like maybe we should do an eight to six, Monday through Saturday kind of thing, like we have in other places?
Correct. And then, actually, thanks for, that was my assumption, but I shouldn't have made, I should not have made that assumption, so thank you for, that was, that was eight to six is, was the assumption.
Monday through Saturday.
Right, to me or the other?
Okay. And then, if we approve your memorandum, are we also approving the traffic control order that's attached to it, which has specific wording for signage?
I would say you would want to have a separate, and I apologize for not catching that in the agenda, but I would propose that we would have separate language to approve the TCO as submitted.
Okay.
Take that up subsequent to that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Seibel Koenig?
So, this is being designated as a non-commercial loading and unloading zone, and I just wanted to make sure, the flower shop is not a commercial venture, so the, their use of this loading zone doesn't constitute commercial?
Correct. It's not the nature of it, it's the vehicle.
Okay.
So, the, so that's why they can't legally use across the street in the commercial loading zone, because they use a passenger vehicle with passenger plates.
Okay.
As opposed to a commercial vehicle with commercial plates.
Okay. And I did, I did, I was concerned about the words loading zone. I wouldn't park in there to get my pizza or to run in and get a cup of coffee, so I'm wondering if there is some language that we'll look at. My other question was this, I was driving there today, and I wondered, the stacking distance on North Ann Arbor Street to turn right onto Michigan Avenue, how does that length compare to the length of the stacking on South Ann Arbor Street?
Comment on that, Mr. Rubel?
On South, North Ann Arbor Street?
Mm-hmm. In front of Bills. I think it's very short.
I think it's about the same.
Do you?
Yeah. And I think if you lose the one more space, you have a school bus and maybe another vehicle there, then you start stacking traffic up, both North and South.
Okay.
But, I mean, we could certainly measure, I mean, but we did not measure that.
I was just curious, how it compared.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Any discussion? I would, I would just say this, if it is the consensus of council to move forward in this way, that is certainly acceptable to me. And I should preface by saying, I appreciate the work that staff has done on this, and I respect their position. However, my preference would be to pursue option A, at least for a finite period of time, assess it, and then maybe come back after 30 days or 60 days, because I don't, I don't, I haven't, go ahead, I'm really clumsy here this evening. I don't observe the same amount of stacking and congestion on South Ann Arbor that I do on North Ann Arbor. And to my point that I made last week, I would really hate to lose an additional, a parking spot if we don't have to. So, again, that would be my preference, but obviously, these issues related to public policy are decided by, by the majority and not simply by one mayor of, or one member of council or the mayor. But that, that would be my preference, again, to, to maybe analyze, review it for a finite period of time, and then bring it back, and if it is causing the type of issues that staff anticipates, then we could proceed with option B. But again, that's just my opinion, and I would welcome any subsequent discussion. Ms. Tahar?
I think a period of assessment is, is appropriate, though I guess I would prefer to assess option B for six months and see how it's going, but I also had a question, and
Please.
And that is, within our agreement with URS about streetscape design, is this a question, is this a question we can refer to them as well to look at in, within the contract of the work they're doing with us?
That would be additional.
Okay.
Anything further, Mr. Rhodes, and then Mr. Gearbaugh?
I would just say that based on my experience, since I live on South Ann Arbor Street, there are times during the day, particularly in the morning, when folks are coming in from the south side of our town and from Myland to turn onto Michigan Avenue, that it does back up and can take a couple of light changes for someone to actually get through, even with the current configuration. So, well, when I first heard about this, my initial thought was, let's just use that transition zone, then began to pay a little more attention to it and decided that probably that was not the best approach. And to address the concern about potentially losing a parking space, I think if we end up deciding that the sign that simply says 20-minute parking is what's approved, then that takes care of that situation, and we still have a valid parking space.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
I would agree with Mr. Rhodes. I mean, I'd been driving that road stretch for 15 years, so I've seen the stacking, and if anytime there's a trailer or something with a truck, and then it starts to become an issue, and even when the car's starting to pull out of there, I think having that extra transition spot will prevent a potential sideswipe. And then also, from the perspective of, what's the other thing you said? I lost my train of thought. Whatever, I think this will be a good way to try this out, and the fact that after 6 o'clock, it's going to be open for parking, we aren't really losing it. That's our main priority at evening time anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Any subsequent discussion? Ms. Dillon?
What type of enforcement is going to be required to maintain the 20-minute limit?
Sergeant Bassel? We would be using, I mean, he
We'd take the same amount that we're doing currently for the four-hour, but we'd be chalking it every 20 minutes.
Right. Is that very labor intensive? To be chalking something every 20 minutes?
Chalking tires when we see cars there or keeping an eye on it, where you'd have to mark it somehow to justify in court.
Right.
If the ticket was contested, that's the whole purpose of chalking tires.
Right. I guess my point is, is that an effective use of your time? To chalk every 20 minutes?
I guess if the council deems that that's necessary, then absolutely, because we'll do as council directs it.
Please, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Anything? Yeah, from my perspective, I wouldn't expect our officers to stand up there every 20 minutes, and, and I mean, they do, they have other, they have calls to go on, they have business checks to go on, they have their routine, daily, as they cruise around town and checking on things. So, I mean, they're going to do what they do, just like in the parking lots, but, but again, they don't, there's times when they don't get back every four hours, for instance, because they're called off on doing other things. They have people, they have to come in and, and check a fix-it ticket, if you will, or do an accident report for somebody. So, there's a lot of things. So, so while, yeah, technically speaking, sure, we could do, but, I mean, we're going to have to, that's how we'll enforce it, is by marking tires, but it's not the intent to be up there looking over the shoulder at 19 and a half minutes going, okay, in 31 seconds, I'm going to, I mean, and that's not, I mean, that's not our intent for, when we're enforcing the, the parking lots, the four-hour parking, you know, it's, so, it's to help turn that, that, that one, that space over, but we're not, like I said, we're not going to be standing there waiting every 20 minutes or every half hour to, okay, well, they're over 10 minutes, we're going to, that's not the intent.
The parking, even the four hours currently is, you know, I don't want to say it's low priority, but it's definitely lower priority. If calls come in, that takes precedence over parking and going back to mark tires, so we treat it the same.
Any additional comments? I'm sorry, Ms. Dillon, did you have anything further?
No, that's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional discussion? So, we're clear on the motion that's been moved by Rhodes, seconded by Roth to approve, and this will be approving option B, correct? Mr. Campbell?
Correct. And I also, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Sergeant Bassel, for the TCO, should we add 8:00 AM till 6:00 PM? We should probably do that, is that correct?
Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday. So, that would be the official language.
Okay. With the non-commercial, the non-commercial loading or unloading?
Correct.
That would need to remain.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I'll redo that.
And we'll approve the TCO subsequent to this motion. Okay? So, if you want, hang tight, just in case there's any, any questions, Sergeant Bassel. If there's nothing further on new business item 15-30, it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Roth to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Campbell, maybe you can help me with this, but a simple motion to acknowledge receipt and approve the TCO dated February the 5th, 2015?
Right, order, yeah, TCO order number 2320.
Okay. So, to acknowledge receipt and to approve or not to approve traffic control order 2320 dated February 5, 2015, as amended, because it will include language about the enforcement period.
Correct.
Everyone clear on that motion? Is there a mover?
I'll move it.
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seibel Koenig. Any questions for Sergeant Bassel, who prepared the traffic control order? Mr. Rhodes?
Does the designation, public non-commercial loading/unloading zone, 20-minute maximum time limit with the added times, does that then designate which of these signs we're going to have to put up there?
We need to develop consensus on that subsequent to this motion.
Okay. As long as, as long as we can address those separately.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? No, then it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Seibel Koenig, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Last, but certainly not least, we need to develop consensus on which one of these four sign renderings we prefer. I'm speaking out of turn, Mayor Protem Rhodes, correct me, but you articulated a preference for option one, which would be the simplest, which would just say 20-minute parking, is that correct, sir?
Correct, with the times printed.
Okay. Times printed on the bottom, okay? Ms. Seibel Koenig?
That is what I would support.
You would prefer option one as well. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. I would go with one or actually four, but I'm sort of ambivalent, I could certainly live with either one. Ms. Tahar?
Living up to my reputation as a wordsmith, I would like to propose a fifth option.
Okay.
Which would be simply 20-minute limit, omit the word parking, just simply say 20-minute limit.
Okay. How do, how does people, Ms. Seibel Koenig, you prefer parking?
I would stay with option one.
Okay. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Same. I'm not sure that tech, I don't know if that terminology is, is clear, so.
Right.
Mr. Rhodes?
I like the word parking there, because I'm not sure that some folks are going to know what 20 minutes applies to.
Okay.
Till the end of the world, or.
Governor will win some, we lose some.
It's, I just, I lifted
Appreciate you articulating your opinion.
I lifted it from the, the other options.
Okay.
Options.
But you could live with one?
Yes.
Okay.
One will be fine.
Mr. Roth?
I like parking, number one.
Okay. And Ms. Dillon?
Option one.
Okay. So, it's unanimous. We'll proceed with, Mr. Fordyce, are you, you clear on that? Proceed with installation of sign number one. Okay. Very good. I don't think we need a motion on that, simply consensus. Okay. Sergeant Bassel, thank you for your time this evening. Anything else on the non-commercial loading zone on South Ann Arbor? No? Then we move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. We'll start with commission, committee, and task force reports from members of council. Now, we just met one week ago, so there might not be much to report. Is there anything? How about that? Okay. We're moving right along. How about reports or other announcements? Ms. Seibel Koenig?
The Celine Chamber is still accepting nominations for the Celine Salute Citizen Awards until Thursday at 5:00 PM. The nomination forms can be downloaded from the website at selenechamber.org, and there is also an online submission form, but this is an opportunity to recognize outstanding volunteers in our community, and the awards program will be held on Friday, March 27 at the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Seibel Koenig. Any additional reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Just kind of in the way of an announcement, I would like to make sure that everyone who sees this recognizes the fact that this city council and city staff, when concern was brought to us, took action on that. We did not ignore it, we didn't bury it. We were able to resolve the matter and still maintain the parking spaces that we need in our downtown, so I think staff and this council ought to be commended.
Absolutely. And, and I appreciate you, you verbalizing that, Mayor Protem Rhodes. In fact, that has been our, our history and our standard for a number of years. We do stop and we do listen, whether it's on this issue, whether it's on the sale of Monroe Street property, whether it's on police dispatch, we have a history, a pretty strong history of being responsive, but I appreciate those comments. If there are no other reports or announcements, this gets back to a point that both Mr. Gearbaugh and I made during the planning commission annual report. and I made during the planning commission annual report, now that things are rebounding, there is more activity, and with more activity comes more decision, more thought, more discernment, and regrettably or regrettably, depending on your perspective, more meetings, and so I am able to confirm on staff's behalf that we are able to talk about our pension liability and the management of that at our second meeting in March, which will be on March 16th, we will have legal counsel, our financial advisor, and a representative from Merz present, that will begin at 6:00 PM. We will have also a work meeting at 6:00 PM at our first meeting in March to discuss our capital improvement projects, or upcoming capital improvement projects, then, of course, in April, we begin review of our upcoming budget. However, we have two other issues that need to be dealt with in the not-too-distant future, the first being more time-sensitive, which is, I'm hoping either at our first meeting in March or our second meeting in March, to bring back the strategic plan that we worked on with, with Lou Bender's staff, with a number of community stakeholders for approval, but prior to that, I think it would be beneficial to have a special work meeting to discuss it, and I think that that type of forum allows for a more robust dialogue and informal discussion. I don't believe that that will take a significant amount of time, but that is my proposal, and I would like to do it sometime again in the next couple of weeks, so, I'm just pulling some dates out of, not out of thin air completely, but one date that I guess I would propose would be, or at least initially proposed, would be either Thursday or Wednesday, looking at the 19th of this month. Maybe at 7:00 PM?
I can do that.
You can do that, Mayor Protem Rhodes?
That's why, yes.
Not the best night, but I can do that.
That's not the best, I get a chuckle out of Mr. Rhodes, who has the old-fashioned calendar, and Mr. Gearbaugh, who has the, the modern type on his phone, but it presents more challenges. Well, let me start down here, Ms. Tahar, how would that work for you?
The 19th would be okay for me.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
19th would work.
Okay, Ms. Dillon?
Well, it's not the best night for me, but if it works for everyone else, I can adjust some things.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the moms on council here are struggling.
Mr. Gearbaugh, would that work for you?
Yeah, fine.
All right, so, and again, we would, I would try my very best to keep that to an hour, and it could theoretically be shorter than that, but again, 7:00 PM, I think the only thing going on here would be a Celtic Festival executive board meeting and then general chairs meeting, but they generally meet in the conference room, so this space should be available. And if sometimes they come into the council chamber with general chairs, they can, they can make it work, as a member, they can make it work for, for one meeting. The other, the other work meeting that we, we need to have, and I actually like to combine two issues, the first is our friends from the Ann Arbor Area Transit Authority would like to come back with some new and additional data to talk about ways to improve public transit in the Celine community, and the second, and you may recall this from a communique or a line item in one of Mr. Campbell's communiques, I have had meetings and discussions with both the Road Commission and with York Township about changing the policy of no trucks on South Ann Arbor Street. Now, I want to preface by saying, in both of those conversations I had with them, I indicated that I suspect that that proposal is going to meet with strong opposition from this council, and that I was pretty cynical to, to begin with, but it's not my decision to make, it's a council decision to make, and I think in the spirit of being good neighbors and trying to cooperate with other governmental entities, we at least owe them an opportunity to, to state their case, and so, again, I would like to combine those two, those are not as time-sensitive as the strategic plan, I guess it would be looking at an additional date in March, although I know, Mr. Rhodes, you're going to be out of town, is it the first couple of weeks?
Correct.
Okay. I guess it would look at maybe another Thursday evening, if we could swing it, again, I would try and keep this one to an hour, hour and a half.
I'd rather postpone it till April, it's not a priority at this point.
April, you'd rather postpone it?
Yep.
Ms. Cybo Koenig, do you have a preference?
I don't, I will not be available the first week in April, or the last week in March, first week.
The only issue with April, Mr. Gearbaugh, and I have no problem scheduling a special work meeting in, in April, but keep in mind, beginning in April, probably well into May, we're gonna have 6 o'clock work meetings to discuss the budget, so again, if you're comfortable having a special meeting, that, that's fine with me.
As far as I'm concerned, on both of those issues, I think we're pretty well set where we are, but.
Okay.
If you wanna have a meeting, that's fine.
So, we came back maybe at our first meeting in March and proposed a couple of dates in, in April, you'd be amenable to that, obviously, Mr. Gearbaugh, Ms. Cybo Koenig, you'd be amenable to that? Mr. Rhodes, your April's pretty free?
I can work with that.
Okay. Ms. Tahar?
Yeah, April is actually better for me as well.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
April will work.
Okay, and Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll work with the clerk, and maybe we can send a few dates to Debbie Freer at AATA, and then likewise to Director Spencer and Supervisor Stenowski from the Road Commission in York Township respectively, and see what we can come up with, okay? All right, very good, so again, and we'll make sure to add this to the calendar, but we'll have a special work meeting to go over the strategic plan on the, excuse me, I'm in the wrong month, on the 19th of this month at 7:00 PM here in council chambers. Okay. Any other reports or announcements? Sorry that that took so long. Back to downtown parking, I guess the only other thing that I want to, to discuss, if, if council is interested in this, you'll recall from our last meeting, we did talk casually about the idea of creating some additional long-term parking spaces in the public parking lot behind Max Comerica Bank, considering that one, Latitude Consulting, which is located above Max, is expanding, in fact, expanding into the basement, the old Pass Pub, and then secondarily, because we have a brew pub, which we hope to have online, and hope that it becomes a destination business sometime this spring, and you do have some additional use rates in front of you, I don't know, Mr. Campbell, if you care to comment at all, they pretty much speak for themselves, but if you have some thoughts, we would, we would welcome those.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you, this, you all recall, we gave you the first week's data last week, and so, we're giving you the second week's data, you'll notice we didn't do Monday, and that was because of the snow, we didn't have the resources to commit to that during the, the big snow we had last week, but, so it's Tuesday through Saturday, and as you can see, the, the two far columns, and Sergeant Bassel, Sergeant Bassel's put this together, but I just wanna make sure I don't, tell him to speak, so that the, where it says percentage open for all lots, that's, again, this is, remember, this is for all extended parking areas, three, five, and then part of four, the average where it says 40%, that's, on average, those three lots, or the two, the two, two lots in the, the part of four that's, that's extended parking, so 40% of the time, on average, you could, theoretically, you could find a spot, however, you'll see the 17% because parking lot five, as we all know, is significantly underutilized, and so that kinda skews everything, so, take the average of parking lot three and part of the, the parking lot four, so 17% of the time, which is significant, significantly different, obviously, so only 70% of the time are you gonna find an extended parking space in those two, however, again, and these numbers, if you may recall, if you compare them to last week's number, the, the week prior number, that was used last, less, the second time around than it was the, the first time, so, the bottom line is parking lot five, 20 spaces significantly underutilized, if we can convince people to use that, it's still, I mean, our downtown, it's a great downtown, but it's not that big, and so, even if you, from my perspective, my humble opinion, if you worked on the southeast quadrant, and you parked in parking lot five in the northwest quadrant, you're still not walking that far, but again, my humble opinion, but so, I'm not sure what it is to try and get folks to use those spaces, we're certainly open for ideas.
Sergeant Bassel, do you care to comment at all?
No, I just created these numbers because I, I took lot number five out of the equation just because that skews the numbers, it doesn't give you an act, actual percentage of open spots between the two other long-term parking lots, so I just thought that was an interesting percentage differences if you take that one parking lot out, I agree 100% that lot number five is completely underutilized, the only people that really park there is Bill Barber.
Comments? Mr. Rhodes?
Just wanted to mention that I did talk to one of the businesses on the south side of Michigan Avenue, and that particular individual and their staff used the gravel parking lot on the other side of Hall Street as opposed to the public parking, so there are folks on that side who are not jamming up parking lot number one, I guess, because they're, they're going to another spot that they can, they're legally allowed to go to, I was a little surprised at the numbers in parking lot number four, particularly on, on a Wednesday, that there were no open spaces left on that, so, but, just the way it is, I guess.
It was completely sporadic, it just, when I had time, or when the chief had time, or, you know, we'd go up there and just go through the lots, so, they're fairly close in time as far as every day, but we tried to make it just random as possible.
Well, let me just, maybe I'll, I'll initiate a discussion, I would be interested in hearing the thoughts of my colleagues, I have some concerns, especially in the southeast quadrant, that when Latitude Consulting adds employees, and when the Salt Springs Brew Company comes online, when you take into account both full-time and part-time employees, I'm concerned that in that area, we are not gonna be able to accommodate people who are working six hours, eight hours, or, or longer, and I don't discount the fact that the small municipal unrestricted lot behind the Key Bank is very seldom utilized, in fact, most of the time I go by, there might be one or two cars, and the data reflects this, and we should be doing our utmost to encourage people to utilize that lot more, whether they're patronizing businesses or services on the north end of Michigan Ave or the south end, but I do think there's, there's a cultural factor at play here, which is, in Michigan, in the United States, we wanna be as close as we can to the business and service that we're patronizing and utilizing, so, again, should we can encourage people to utilize that space and, and direct them to that lot, absolutely, I'm just not sure how realistic that is, and again, considering some of the economic activity that's going to be transpiring in the southeast quadrant, I do think we need some, some more long-term parking spots in that area.
I, I tend to agree with you, you know, I, we, we can talk all we want about people should use lot number five, but they're not gonna do it.
It is sorta off the beaten path, it's not right there in the downtown, so I can see how it gets forgotten, that's for sure.
Mr. Gearbaugh, thank you, Mr. Rhodes?
Experiencing how to park over in Ann Arbor on their campus with, where it's a nut, nutty place anyways, I walk a half-mile every day to get to where I park, convenience from that aspect, I think from us is looking at what our investments are going to happen downtown in buying more parking is kind of another issue, we're about to put a half-million dollars or more into Michigan Avenue, we already are contributing tens of thousands of dollars, and that's the reason why I generated this document about assessed value and tax generation downtown, to support Main Street, and I think we put a lot of money into the downtown, and I think we've got a lot of parking, but we also have to be concerned about what potential redevelopment can happen downtown to add to the tax base, and if we end up owning all the parking and all the developable land, kinda defeats the purpose, so, at some point, there's gotta be a balance, and I'm not sure where that is at this point, but I think, right now, I think we have sufficient parking, it's just a behavior change, and we knew this was coming, it was always gonna be this, and parking enforcement was part of it, and I think looking at spending a significant, a dollar amount, or even leasing long-term parking on the benefit of a one or two businesses is a subsidation that I don't think our taxpayers in the residential aspects that are looking at roads that are being fixed and repaired and so forth, is something they're gonna be really wanting to support at this point in time.
Ms. Cybo Koenig?
Oh, I'm sorry, I am, I am concerned about the additional staff, and I, I don't think we're gonna be able to change the culture fast enough to make people happy, I, I just, parking lot number five's a long ways from the southeast corner, where a lot of the new employees will be working, but not sure I know exactly what the answer should be.
I guess at this time, I'm trying to, to focus the conversation and dialogue specifically as to whether we need to create within our existing inventory more long-term parking spots, especially in the southeast quadrant of downtown, I understand some of the concerns, and I agree with some of the concerns, about investing in more parking at, at this juncture, and there's, you know, things are improving, but, but budgets are, are still tight, and I'm cognizant of that, and I respect that, at the same time, looking forward and, and looking five or 10 years out, I see that just about every quadrant in our downtown is underutilized, so I think at some point, we are gonna have to take the plunge and, and do something to, to expand the parking options in our downtown, but again, in, in the finite period, I guess what I'm interested in is whether there's consensus to, to designate some more long-term parking spots in the southeastern quadrant.
Sure, has anyone suggested a number of long-term spots to add that might alleviate this enough to make, make it reasonable? Is there a number?
Um, well, kind of, it's, I wouldn't necessarily say it's totally pulled out of the air, but a few weeks ago, when the chief and I went and we talked to Latitude about their pending increased employees, you know, around 12 or, 12 or 15, and after we'd done some, at that point, some minimal investigation, we looked and, and one of the thoughts was to potentially designate a total of 12 spaces in parking lot two, in which would be the southeast corner of that parking lot, so kind of six and six, is there, so six facing the Sun Engineering Building, and six on the opposite, if you will, a mirror effect, and then also make it more easier to understand that there is actually on-street parking along, so between, along the backside of, of Sun Engineering, there, there's parking on both north and, I'm sorry, east and west of where the, the house is back there, there is, but there's, there's very confusing signage that, that you wouldn't understand if you could park there or not, so, that would, I think we ended up with about, maybe with that, another eight spaces, I believe, and so that would be 20 spaces, long-term, that you could, the combination of in the parking lot and on the street.
Okay.
Mr. Rhodes, again?
Yeah, I would just say then, based on this additional information and better understanding what it is that you're looking for, I, I would support creating some longer-term parking spaces within lot number two, that won't alleviate the overall parking situation, of course, but it may help with a few situations, and, you know, even if we had the resources, we can't create parking fast enough to offset the additional requirements that are coming at us, so it's, I think I mentioned this in our last meeting, it's just gonna be a bother for a while.
I, I agree, but I, I think that it's important to continue to have these discussions and have a, a long-term vision as to, to where we wanna go and how we can accommodate the needs of both our businesses and, and our citizens, but, so, to, to Mr. Campbell's point, you'd be comfortable with 12 in the, sort of, the, the southeast region of that particular lot?
Sure, I bet that number's as good as any number.
Okay, Mr. Gearbaugh?
Now, understanding too, this is a better approach, I don't have a problem with that, but what about putting some long-term in the other parking lot behind Mr. Grossman's building in that area, to the far, far end of that, if we're trying to balance out the parking lots and spaces that, I don't know if, if you're basing your decision on those extra spaces in parking lot number two upon your observation of what's actually being used, or how you came about that?
Well, that, so the lot behind Mr. Grossman's office, which would be utilized by employees and customers of Bonito's, Breckengrill, Monjammo, Benny's, that wall, that abuts the wall property, how many of those spaces approximately are long-term parking, in fact, you'll see the employees of those businesses parking there early in the morning.
I just don't know what's where.
There's 20 spots available in city lot number four, which is the lot back there, and they run from the trash can, there's the two trash bins.
Right.
Well, it's the spaces between the two trash bins, and then all the spaces that run to the south toward Henry.
Oh, so those are long-term, okay, I didn't realize that, I was thinking that.
There's, there's 20, 20 long-term spots in that lot.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I thought it was roughly 15, 20, okay, but Mr. Gearbaugh, you'd be amenable to 12 roughly behind Max?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Cybo Koenig?
Yes, I would like to see somebody look into whether we need a couple more spots in parking lot number four also.
Okay. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, though, I have a question.
Please.
So, what proportion of the spaces is, is if we take 12, or, yeah, take 12 away for long-term, how many does that leave for the normal?
I'm not sure how many total spaces are in that lot that are designated public that aren't assigned to Comerica or the Pass Company.
Oh, right.
Because there's five, six spots for Pass, and then there's probably a half a dozen or 10 spots for Comerica Bank.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that, although I think we're making parking lot four complicated enough that it would be enough that it would be faster for people to park in number five and, or, sorry, two, making number two complicated enough that it would be faster just to park in number five and walk across the street.
Well, just keep encouraging. Mr. Roth?
I've got some real concerns. One big concern is we're trying to accommodate two particular businesses. One that just came in, and several years ago, there was a zoning question far as could that property, far as the old Methodist church, be converted into a restaurant. And Planning Commission turned that party proposed to do such down because of lack of parking spaces. At this point in time, it comes up again, and I'm not sure how much parking spaces was discussed by the Planning Commission. I feel as far as the other company wishing to increase their number of employees, if we start to set a precedent of any other business would have the same rights to make such proposals, I kind of look as far as we need to really know how much is for employee parking, how much is for customer parking, and what should we really accommodate. So I'm really problem with that. I'd like to know the real figures. I feel as though any business or any company that comes in town, employee, or parking, and especially for their employees, should be a problem they should try to resolve instead of increasing the burden that we have for overall citywide. I think they should not expect us to come out and accommodate to them because we just simply can't. So I'm really not in favor of adding any other long-term parking stuff until we see and understand the entire picture of how many customers for doing commerce that we really need, for as employees and customers. And I can really see if restaurants go in full swing, it's going to be a problem, but that could be more of an evening problem. And when we ever have, when we close down some of the parking lots, which we do many occasions, the citizens have to see and customers have to see where else they can park. And I think this is going to have to be kind of a standard practice that the people, businesses, their employees and so on should take a look at for us, where can they park someplace else that we're not burdening the city for providing spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Ms. Dillon?
I'm on the fence. I see both sides of it. I do understand what you're saying about an allotment of spaces, try to spread them out, but I do also see Mr. Roth's point of, it does seem like we are now taking our parking lots that are supposed to be drawing patrons in and filling them full of employees. And there has to be some sort of a compromise somewhere, and maybe it's the employees that need to be parking off of the main lots.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have a bit of consensus, but if I may make a recommendation, I think there's value in being thoughtful with this proposal, as we try to be with all proposals. So why don't we do this? Maybe this can come back at our March meeting as an action item, Mr. Campbell. Maybe you can have a rendering of where exactly the 12 places are going to be, where the 12 spots are going to be designated. I think we all have a pretty good idea, but knowing exactly. I think the question's been raised by numerous council members. Once you subtract those 12, if we create those 12 long-term parking spots behind Max, how many spots are already reserved in that particular lot? I think that information would be helpful. And Councilwoman Seibalkanik, if I'm not mistaken, you also thought there might be value in assessing the needs in parking lot number...
Four.
Behind Montjamo's...
Yes.
...Breckengrill and Benito's, Benny's, to identify, just so we're all very clear, whether that particular lot would need more long-term parking?
Yes.
Okay. Does that make sense, Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Okay. Am I missing anything? Please.
Sorry, if I may, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Seibalkanik, could you just elaborate on, are you talking about the needs for that quadrant, and so it'd be the southwest quadrant?
Well, if I'm looking at the chart properly, parking lot number four averages about a 40% vacancy. I've just, I've had several people who work in that quadrant complain about there not being enough long-term. So if someone could just, I mean, I don't know if it's just that that person or persons are complaining, but I'd like to bring it up when someone brings an issue to me. So if it could just be looked at.
Okay. Are you good? Thank you.
So this will come back as an action item on the second and in the interim. If you have any additional thoughts, concerns, questions, please direct them to City Manager Campbell. Sergeant Bassel, thank you for being here. If there's nothing further on downtown parking, we move on to the last action, or the last discussion item, rather, excuse me. And perhaps Mr. Fordyce or DPW Director Fordyce is going to take the lead on this. This is the DTE rate change for LEDs. And again, you should have an email in front of you dated Monday the ninth, addressed to Jeff by Lance Alley, Account Manager at DTE Community Life. Mr. Fordyce?
Thank you. The, so you have that email in front of you that explains DTE's position on the rate increase. The original LED rates, that was a new technology for DTE, and their business model is really based on uniformity of product and long-term experience with that product and how much it costs to maintain those items. So when the LEDs came in, that model was pressed a little bit, and they came up with what they deemed experimental rates for LEDs. And we installed, City of Celine installed some, two rounds of LEDs under those experimental rates. And now that they have some time under their belts, they've looked back and said, those rates were too low. Their maintenance and energy cost experience suggests that they need to raise those rates. So that's what the proposed increases are about. Also, along with that, they've found some more durable old technology products, the high-pressure sodium lights, they are saying now last much longer than they used to, so they're experiencing lower maintenance costs on those. And the new proposed rates have decreases for some of the high-pressure sodium lights. In Celine, we have 16 different streetlight styles out there, and in the proposed rates, five are proposed to go down and 11 are proposed to go up. So 33% of our existing streetlight stock would see decreased rates and 67% would see increased rates. We started our LED conversions in late 2010, and that first round was 56 lights were converted to LED, and that project was fully funded by DTE. So that was no cost to City of Celine, and our annual light bill, if you will, was decreased by almost $5,700. And then in 2013, we did another round of conversions. We did another 121 streetlights. That was funded in part by DTE, just basically a grant. Then there were also energy optimization incentive funds, also provided by DTE, and then the city funded $42,515. And that project netted us an annual savings of a little over $12,000 in addition to the $5,600 already. And so roughly to date, we've saved $47,400 by the LED conversions. Now, that savings will continue into the future, but the new rates will reduce the net savings from $18,000 a year down to $12,000 a year. So it's kind of a weird little mix right now with the proposed rates because some of our streetlights, our non-LED streetlights will be having a rate decrease, and our, all of our LEDs and the rest of the lights will be having an increase. So if the proposed rates go into effect, our annual light bill will still be $7,500 less than we were paying in 2010.
Thank you, Mr. Fordyce. What questions do we have or comments? Mayor Protim Rhodes?
Mr. Fordyce, our downtown pedestrian lights, those poles are actually owned by the city, is that correct?
Those are owned by the city. We pay an energy-only rate to DTE for those because they're un-metered, and that rate is one of the rates that's going down.
Okay. And we, if a lamp needs to be replaced, we do the replacement?
Correct.
We purchase a lamp, we do the replacement?
Yes.
And will that, if those get converted over to LED under the Michigan Avenue makeover next year, will we also, I'm assuming we still will own those lamps, those poles? Will we still do the replacement lamps ourselves?
Yes.
So we should see more savings there?
After 20 years.
Yeah, right. If it happens.
Yeah, yeah, that's my understanding. I mean, we would have an option to convert them to DTE-owned if we wanted to, but for those particular light fixtures, especially converting to LED, I think maintaining ownership of those poles and fixtures makes the most sense. And either continue with an energy-only tariff with DTE or just put them on a meter.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Gearbock?
So when we look at the new rates, I mean, how much savings will we still have with LED versus some other high-efficiency sodium or mercury?
It's not as great as it was. So like, the ones that I really targeted in our last conversion were our 250-watt high-pressure sodium underground lights fixtures. Back when we converted them, we'd saved $109 a year per fixture. Under the new rates, we would only save $66.50. So that takes about a three-and-a-half-year payback and stretches that out into the five or six-year range, which is still a pretty good payback period, but not as great as it was.
And do we know with these rate increases, whether this is, how are they proposing this? Is this just like the initial figure that you're using, or is it like a phase in over a couple of years that it will eventually just even out?
That was, there was one comment in that email that I didn't get to follow up with Mr. Alley on, because he did, in his last paragraph there says, "A good thing about the new rate structure is that if LED improves and they experience lower costs, that they'll be able to pass that on to the customers without another rate case." So there must be some kind of adjustment clause built into the current rate case they're building, but I don't have specifics on that.
So it sounds like they're going to overbuild the rate, and then if it turns out to be cheaper, they may reduce the rates.
Well, my understanding is the current rate case is based on past five or six years of experience with the LEDs.
If I can continue, I was just saying, my concern about this was, just like all the other communities, this appears to be kind of a bait and switch. And unfortunately, using experimental rates, doesn't seem like a major conglomerate is going to just use an experimental rate and now come back three years later and say, "We've blown through this." So I don't know what's happening in terms of, I guess, a consolidated effort to try and address this or whatever, but I think we, as council, should either support a resolution or whatever else needs to occur to make sure that this is taken under consideration because, at least for us, it seems like we're still going to be saving, but not to the degree that we had originally thought it.
Correct.
And now we've got to really assess every time we convert what to do, so.
So just so I'm clear, Mr. Gearbock, or Councilmember Gearbock, you'd like to see a resolution drafted and considered at our next meeting in March?
Yeah, something similar. I'm not sure when they're going to meet to do the discussion of the rates, whatever, but I know there's stuff that's been similarly proposed in Ann Arbor and Ipsy and a couple other communities. So if we get something like that, I think that would be great.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Fordyce? Or Mr. Campbell, if you'd like to comment, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And also, in addition to that, in addition to the LED, you may have noticed in your packets that you received last week for this evening's meeting is, was a media release that DT put out reference residential rate increase. So I wanted, and I believe, I'm not, I believe that's what Ann Arbor is, that's what they had passed their road boost on, I think, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure I read the resolution.
But we can certainly verify that. But anyway, so, so the, as you can, as you can read in the media release, that commercial industrial rates are going down and residential are going up approximately one and a half percent. So, and I believe they tout a number here for a regular residential, I think $3 and, yeah, there, thank you, $3.25 increase in monthly bills, so.
Yeah, I think this is just a trade-off that's happening as a result of a loss of manufacturing and everything. Those costs are being shifted on do-house, but not necessarily fairly in terms of residential. Thank you for investigating this.
Any other comments or questions? How would the rest of council feel about, I mean, at a minimum, the clerk's office drafting a resolution and bringing it forward at our next meeting on March the 6th for review and discussion? Ms. Seibalkanik, you'd be comfortable with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I'm fine.
Okay. Ms. Tahar?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
A question that I have is for residential and the city LED rates.
It's, it could be, but I mean, as far as, are you asking for the resolution?
Right.
That, right, that would be up to council, but I think...
If you find that kind of information whenever other resolutions, I think that's fine. It's whatever we need to do to support our citizens that are being hit hard besides our taxpayers in the city.
Obviously, whatever resolution comes before us on the second, it's subject to change based on prerogative of a majority of council, so.
I'd be happy to look at a resolution.
Very good. Obviously, we're not asking for any commitments this evening, Mr. Roth, just interested in having the clerk's office pursue something. Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Very good. We'll work with that and try to get a draft out to at least Mr. Gearbock, who's sort of the sponsor of this, in advance of that meeting. Okay? Mr. Fordyce, thank you. Appreciate your time on this. Anything further on the DTE rate change for LED? No? Any other discussion items? Then we proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council this evening? Well, again, we have, our next two meetings are on March the 2nd and the 16th, with work meetings beginning at 6:00 PM. The first will be on the CIP, and the second will be on our pension liability. And again, please note, and we'll add it, of course, to the calendar, that we have a special meeting in a couple of weeks on the Thursday evening, starting at 7:00, to discuss the strategic plan. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. At this time, I would seek a motion to adjourn this regular council meeting at 9:17 PM.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, seconded by Councilmember Gearbock. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is...